I hereby call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, April 26, 2023. And could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Brahm?
Here.
Mr. Hennigan?
Here.
And like last time, we need a...
In the absence of Chairperson Mateo, we need a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Hennigan as temporary chair.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Brahm?
Aye.
Mr. Hennigan?
Aye. Thank you very much. We have a quorum. And with us also is our village attorney. The first item of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 22, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
No.
Hearing none. And you call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brahm?
Aye.
Mr. Hennigan?
Aye. Motion was approved. Next, is there anyone present who would like to speak during this time about an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. In that case, we can move on to the village board update. Anne, do you have one?
Yes, I do. The village board considered the Groveland Avenue variations on April 6 regarding the second-story structure. The board voted six to zero to rely on staff's historical interpretation of... for that type of second-story structure, which would allow it by right and not by variation. So that was after the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did additional research and talked to the former community development director, Director Abt, and she said that she considered that a different type of structure, not a deck. So that type of interpretation was upheld by the board, and they directed the zoning administrator to follow that interpretation moving forward and to consider whether amendments are needed to the zoning code to clarify that this type of structure is committed. And staff recommends that we consider that at some point. Since it's not immediate need, we didn't bring anything forward for this meeting. Regarding the front porch deck structure, the board voted to deny the variation. However, the board directed the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding that area of the village because it was excluded from Oldstead's general plan in what is a little bit different in terms of layout, to consider that to allow greater flexibility in constructing front yard parches and decks. So they asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider that and then share their thoughts with the board, and that is on our agenda for this evening. The village board considered the central houser variations during their April 6 and April 20 meetings. On April 6, the board asked District 96 to revise and resubmit the site plans to address the board's concerns. The board considered the revised plans on April 20 and voted to approve the requested variations with the condition that they're based on the revised plans submitted on April 20. We are considering those revised plans during... excuse me, during our special meeting on Monday. So that was originally on our agenda for tonight, and due to the fact that we wouldn't have a quorum to vote with Commissioner Marhol recusing himself, that's been moved to a special meeting on Monday, May 1. During the April 20 meeting, the board also voted to approve the text amendments related to the site plan review process with the amendment that the applications for major amendments would go through the same review process as applications for new site plans, first to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation, and then to the board for review and a decision. So it'll be the same process throughout. Planning and Zoning Commission will review and make a recommendation on both new and major amendments to approve site plans. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask for a clarification?
Of course.
On the second-story structure? Could you discuss... was the prior staff's interpretation that that wasn't a structure that was recognized under the code and therefore was not ever either permitted or not permitted?
It was permitted, but it was considered a different type of structure. It was not considered a type of deck and therefore wouldn't be subject to the regulations about originally the four-foot limitation and then later the first-story elevation limitation.
So it's a structure that's not defined under the...
A structure that is not defined currently that we may want to clarify...
Which is kind of what we suspected, I think, at our meeting.
And that was confirmed, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have no public hearings this evening. Moving on to new business, our first item is a conceptual review for proposed planned unit development for a mixed-use development at 28 and 30 East Burlington Street. The applicant is Lyon Development, II LLC, and this item begins on page 21 if you're following along in the electronic packet. Anne, would you like to start this off?
Sure. I apologize, I'm having a slight technical error, so my packet is not showing up, so I'm going to try to give you a brief description and then turn it over to the applicant. So this is a... an application. This is the first step of a review. It's a conceptual review of plans for planned unit development. The village approved the type of use of planned unit development in 2020. This is the first application we've had for it. And a planned unit development is this type of special use approval. And effectively, it gives the village board the opportunity to review a development and allow certain... what you would normally apply for a variation for, certain exceptions from the standards in the development code in exchange for having some public benefits to the public. This particular application is unique in that the height of the proposed building would not be approved through any other means other than through a planned unit development. And that height increase was approved as part of the recent transit-oriented development amendments to the zoning ordinance. So this is in a prominent location in the B2 Central Business District. It spans currently what are four parcels that will be combined into one. Three of the parcels are in the B2 zoning district. One parcel, which I think is called out as Parcel 3 in the packet, is in the R1A district. The applicant proposes to rezone that property so that all of the properties would be in the same zoning district. And this... again, this is the first step. So the purpose of tonight is to have your initial impressions, to have the applicant describe the project, to ask questions, and give the applicant feedback. Per the strict process that's laid out in the zoning ordinance, the next step would be to have a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That would include a more detailed preliminary site plan that's quite detailed and that's laid out in the zoning ordinance attachment that's in the meeting packet. After that review, the commission will make a review and recommendation. The preservation commission would review and provide comments that would... and those two reviews would go to the village board. The village board would review the preliminary site plan and make a decision on that. Within a year, there would be a final site plan that would be presented to the village board confirming that the... some additional details, if there are any additional details that are remaining, confirming that the preliminary site plan is indeed the final site plan for the project. So that's the... the process is laid out. Due to the location of the building in the downtown, staff has recommended that the applicant go through an additional review with the preservation commission after this meeting. So... and we're in the conceptual design phase, get the... the idea is to get the preliminary impression from the preservation commission before proceeding to the public hearing, but that's up to the applicant's discretion. So with that preamble, I'll hand it over to the applicant, Lyon Development, represented by John with Studio 222 Architects. If you could... if you could... I'm sorry, stand up at the mic so we get you on the audio system.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for having us. So I'll just... you have the packets in front of you. I'll start in essence with sheet 0.1, which is 11 by 17 sheets with the blue border kind of on the bottom.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch your name.
I'm sorry. I'm John Madea with Studio 222 Architects.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So I think Anne already described this site. It's located on Burlington Street, you know, not too far from here, and it combines four separate lots. So the area in orange is... are the parcels in question. The portion that faces Burlington along with the radius back, those are the three lots that are zoned currently B2. And then the one portion kind of to the west, that's the... our one zoning. So we flip the page to 1.0. This is kind of the proposed site layout, and I can just... before I get into the details of the building, I think it's probably worth mentioning that this would be a five-story apartment building with ground floor, parking, and 21 basically rental apartment units. And they would be luxury rental apartment units. In this case, they're a little bit larger than what you'd think of typical apartments that are currently being built in the suburbs surrounding. So I would compare these to more like what you would see in the older condo buildings where the square footage is larger, so that your living room is larger, but I think that's kind of what would fit this area in terms of demographics that I think, you know, Patrick is expecting that they would be renting here, especially close to the downtown area. A little bit about the... just the planning of it, we kept the building set back 10 feet from the property line, so that would keep the existing line of the buildings. And the intent is to continue that same kind of paver pattern that's already existing at the corner by the restaurant space. And then as far as site circulation, the intent is that you would enter kind of on the east side through a drive off of Burlington, and you could circularate... circulate around the building to the back, and that's where you would enter the indoor parking garage, or you could park in the actual parking lot. And then to exit the property, you would, in essence, just go around the building and exit on the west side. On the ground floor, I should mention, too, that some of the sustainable initiatives we're looking at is obviously vehicle charging... electric vehicle charging stations. We're looking into kind of a bio swale along that northern portion, the more triangular portion, kind of to help as a buffer, and also we haven't investigated it fully, but maybe help with stormwater management. And then also the parking spaces that you see kind of cross-hatched in brown would be permeable pavers. And of course, we're planning on separating us from the residential properties with a fence to buffer the residential properties. If you flip to 1.1, this kind of in more detail shows what the actual program is on the ground floor. As I mentioned before, there's 21 total units, two of them being the live-work units that are shown in the purple that would face the street, and that would be access at grade. The intent is that someone would live there but also have either an office or some kind of space off the street that, you know, potential customers could enter. So both of those would be access from the street. The center portion that's blue, that would be kind of the main lobby with mailboxes that would take you to an elevator to access the units that are up above. And then the backside of the building would be the 16 indoor parking spaces as well as bike storage area, as well as some other mechanical rooms and trash room. 1.2, these are, again, just shows diagrammatically, you know, the upper floors. Obviously, they need a lot more development to show what the unit layouts are, but intent is that all the units have patios or balconies. In this case, the units that are on floors two through four would have balconies either facing forward or east and west and not the back, just to be sensitive to the neighbors. So we intentionally put those on the side. And then the top four-bed unit does have a terrace off the back, but again, we set the actual living area back quite a bit. So again, you're not facing the residents directly, and you are quite a bit above them. So I think that helps to alleviate the concern with maybe some light pollution or noise. And 2.1 is kind of a conceptual elevation, and, you know, understanding kind of the historic character of the downtown area, we don't want to recreate what's there. We don't want to, you know, I guess, in a sense, go back to when it was built, because I don't think anyone wants that. So we tried to propose something that's a little bit more up-to-date, but still try to keep some kind of historical sense. And the way we were thinking about it is more in the materials, so we used traditional materials like brick, a limestone base. And some of the detailing, it's more modern, but still, I think, has that feel that fits well with the surroundings. 3.1, again, it just shows you the elevation. So because the building, in essence, it's not like an infill... it's an infill lot, but we're setting it back from the neighboring property. So in essence, you're going to be seeing all three facades driving down Burlington. It's not like we can hide a facade up against another building. So we intentionally detailed the east and west and even the north facade to be kind of similar to the rest of the building. So it's not that we're trying to cheapen the materials or anything on those elevations, because they're still very important as you're, you know, walking or driving downtown. 4.1, that just shows some close-up views. These are not in context, but you can see some of the detailing on the cast stone, the cornices, the setbacks. Again, light fixtures are somewhat conceptual, but you can expect, you know, detailing and probably more since this is obviously conceptual, so... And then 5.1 and 5.2 go together, but this just gives you an idea of the context of the building. So if you... 5.1 is the current condition, and if you flip to 5.2, this is kind of an approximation of what the building would be in... shown along Burlington. So you can see, you know, where the existing four-story building is. Because of the peaked roofs, part of our building is almost at the same height. So we do have a portion that pops up, but where the terrace is set back, I think the building is still within kind of that character. And then you flip to 5.3 and 5.4, this is a view looking west along Burlington. And then the last two pages, I think, are informational just in terms of looking at what the impact would be to the neighboring properties because of the height of the building. So we created a shadow study for two different times of the year. One would be the summer solstice and then spring and fall equinox. So you can see that, you know, the shadow at the, you know, 8:00 AM bar crosses the... obviously, our property is mostly in shadow, but the neighboring property is still a lot of sunlight. And then as you move throughout the day, obviously, it becomes less and less. And then in the afternoon, the shadows are really on the commercial properties. Now, it's probably worth updating this and showing what the shadow is from the existing building that's on the corner, because I think the impact from that would be greater than what it would be from ours. So I think that's all I have. I just wanted to add some of the sustainable initiatives that we're looking at. So obviously, we'd have energy-efficient appliances, paths considering... we're looking into like an all-electric HVAC system, like a heat pump system. I mentioned the permeable pavers and the EV charging stations. We have bicycle parking. Some of the things we're looking at is... we're probably not pursuing LEED, but some of the simple things that LEED kind of specifies, we can incorporate obviously low-floor plumbing fixture. We're obviously in a TOD district, so that's a plus. Walkable kind of development. And then also, as part of the building materials, we're looking at a lot of recycled materials and also low-emitting materials, and that's kind of where we're at. And I also mentioned the rain garden or the bio swale in the back. So I think that's an overview. I mean, if you guys have any questions, let us know. We're here to answer them.
And John, if I could indulge the Planning and Zoning Commission just for a second before you ask questions, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that I missed in my introduction. So there are four areas in the conceptual plan that wouldn't currently meet the zoning ordinance standards, that would be subject to the special approval. So to revisit the height, the proposed building would be five stories and 64 feet tall. That would be a permitted height as part of a planned unit development in the zoning ordinance. If they didn't apply for a planned unit development, the maximum height would be 40... four stories or 48 feet, just to clarify that point. The parking aisle widths are slightly less than required, so they're 22 feet wide. That's interior and on the surface lot, or under the building and on the surface lot. They're required to be 24 feet wide, so two feet narrower than required. The parking spaces are all proposed to be eight feet 6 inches wide, which is half a foot less than required, so the standard size is nine feet. And the perimeter parking lot landscape area is reduced in two areas, so that should be 10 feet around the parking lot area that's on the surface lot. On the Parcel 3 area, it should be 10 feet on all three sides. On the most... excuse me, northwestern side, it is 10 feet wide. On the northeastern side, it's five, and on the southwestern side, it varies from minimal to up to five feet, I think. So those are the areas that would need specific relief from the zoning ordinance standards where they applied to the property.
Thank you, Anne. Does anyone have any questions for John while he's still at the podium?
I have questions.
Please.
Did you... were you involved in designing this, or were you the primary designer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So could you... I was hoping you'd have maybe a larger diagram or something, but could you go through for the facade, the different materials and the different colors?
Sure.
I can see on the one document, there's two different colors of fiber cement. There's cast stone, and I don't know if that's the same as natural limestone or if that's some kind of a manufactured product. And then the other elements, if you could go...
Yes. So the light portion that you see at the base would be, I think, more than likely some kind of manufactured stone. I think an Indiana limestone is probably cost prohibitive. I think we'll look at that, and that's, you know, something we'll definitely look at. But there's a lot of cast stone or manufactured stone products. They're good quality and I think would replicate that look.
Excuse me, just... and cast stone, what is the cast stone made of?
Cast stone is basically a concrete material with aggregate that's colored to a specific color. So it's used very widely as a material to kind of replicate what used to be natural stone, in essence. So I would venture to say that probably 90% of the buildings you see built throughout now use some kind of cast stone product or manufactured cast stone. There are various types of manufactured stone. Cast stone is one of them.
And do those products... do they have any variation in color, like a natural stone, or are they like a solid color?
They do, yeah. There's always a little bit of variation. It is more uniform, but just from the manufacturer process, there's always a little bit color variation. There is color variation, but in general, it is more... Now, you can also do a mix, but, you know, each piece, in essence, would be very similar.
And when you're... I know you're... I'm interrupting you, but I just didn't want to forget any of these points. When you're choosing the materials, the actual materials you will use, would someone on your team be actually going out and choosing those pieces of material, or would you just get a shipment and you just use what they ship you?
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, we get samples, and that's something we can bring to the next public hearing or the next hearing. That's something we do. We get the actual materials. We look at them. We, you know, put them together, make sure they make sense, you know? So that's something we do. It's not... yeah, we don't just say, "This is the color," and go ahead and build it.
Okay.
Yeah. And usually, for this scale product, what would be do, and it's typical in construction, is that they would build a mock-up in the field. So, you know, if we have this... the cast stone, the brick, they would either do an in-place mock-up, meaning they would build part of the wall to see how it looks. And then the other one is sometimes they build it to the side, and they put all the materials together, and that's to kind of just do a final check on mortar color, you know, make sure the quality of construction is there and that you're kind of happy with how it looks. So there's, you know, a few steps that we typically take that would, you know, that we get the quality we expect or we thought about when we were designing the building. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So the answer to the materials, so yeah, so all the white kind of would be the cast stone. The dark would be a brick product, so it'd be a full-depth brick product. And then the fiber cement that I mentioned would be for that setback portion of the top story. So that would be the kind of least visible setback portion on the top. And that's, again, it's like a cement material, so it's... it's... I don't know if you're familiar with hardy board. It's, in essence, that's what it is. It's basically kind of a durable cement product that's painted, and you can get it in various colors. So that's... And then the windows are more likely some kind of vinyl or probably not aluminum in the residential portion, but then the ground floor typically in the kind of retail-facing portion, that would be a storefront product, so it would be like an aluminum product, insulated glass. But the upper portion would be, again, some kind of either vinyl or some kind of composite material. So those... Yeah.
Sorry. Come on. Oh, so just a few follow-up questions. So it looks like you have two different colors of fiber cement, and from what I can tell, the sort of under the cornice on... maybe you can just tell me where the fiber cement would go. I know you said it would only be on the setback portion, but...
Yeah, I think that intent was maybe that the cornices are one color, and then the actual setback portion on the fifth floor is a different color. Yeah, I think that that was the intent. I didn't... honestly, it... I'm calling for color A and color B. Is that the... Let me look at my notes.
Yeah, FC1. FC2 or something like that?
Okay. Fiber cement, color 2. Yeah, I think that's just to kind of do a little accent on the corners versus the actual wall of the... so it gives some contrast to the facade. Yeah.
So those would be on the top, and then...
Yeah, but they would be very similar in color. It's not... yeah, so it would be one, maybe it's like a dark gray, the other one is lighter gray or something like that.
Okay. And those are panels? Those would be panels?
Yes, those would be more panels, so they wouldn't look like a siding. It would look more like a panel product, and, you know, we would treat the joint with some kind of battening or something, so that would, you know... it wouldn't feel like it's like an aluminum panel. Yes, it would be more treated more like siding with battens at joints and things. Yeah.
Okay. So not like a solid panel, but more, you're saying, more of like lap siding of some kind?
Yeah, so the panel would be solid, but then we would add like battens around windows and then any kind of like joints, we would do that kind of treatment, so then it feels more like it's built up and it's not like a flat facade, in essence. Yeah.
And then around some of the windows, like on the west elevation and the south elevation, there's like a wider border around them. And can you explain that?
Yeah, so that's just the detail on the brick. We would set the brick, that first course of brick around the window back half an inch just to give like a little bit of a shadow line, so it doesn't look like a flat facade, and it just adds a little bit of detail to the building.
So it's still brick? It's just you're indicating a different elevation, basically?
Yeah, it sets back. So I think on the elevation, it just looks darker maybe because it's in shadow, but that the intent, that would still be brick there. Yeah.
Okay. And then the cornice around the top is a metal?
That would be also the fiber cement. It would be, you know, built up, but then the actual covering of that would be also fiber cement. Yeah.
For the cornices?
Correct.
Is that what it says? Okay. And what were you... is there going to be anything on top of the roof?
No, there was... no. We didn't plan anything for the top of the roof, just, you know, obviously, the patios would have like pedestal pavers, but yeah, there was no... nothing planned for the top, very top of the roof.
And is there going to be a planned color for the roof?
It's... what we're seeing would be white.
And your picture showed...
White membrane roof, yeah. More than likely, depending on the kind of HVAC system we would go with, sometimes, yeah, if it's like a standard furnace system, you would have condensing units up there, but they're like the residential kind. but they're like the residential kind, so you wouldn't see them from the ground. Just the parapet would hide them, and those are usually, you know, maybe two to three feet high at the most, yeah.
Okay, and that you're looking into having high-efficiency windows of some kind by some manufacturer?
Yeah, I mean, they would definitely, you know, what we're seeing in a lot of these windows is they're actually better. Like the products we're buying, or they're being installed in some of our other projects, they're better than the code, than energy code requires, so that they, you value, you know, it's like .30 or .29 versus like .32 typical. So those would be, and the good thing with the composite windows and the fiber cement is that they are very energy efficient. If you go into more of the aluminum, you lose some efficiency there, but that's why we typically stay away from aluminum windows, like this kind of application. The storefront, I think, still makes sense, just because they're more of like a commercial product at the ground floor, but yeah.
Okay.
You somewhat already answered my first question, which was why didn't you go with the aluminum for window frames for consistency on those upper floors, but.
Yeah, I mean, one is the energy code, like aluminum windows, like I mentioned, are typically not as efficient. The other main factor is obviously cost. The aluminum windows are generally a lot more expensive. Now, the vinyl windows have gotten really good compared to, I think, what the conception is, and you can get them in different colors. There's a Pella product also that is, the name of the actual composite material escapes me now, but it's not a vinyl product. It's basically like a fiber reinforced product, and that's also very energy efficient, but it's better structurally, so you can get thinner mullions. So it looks a lot cleaner, and it looks more like an aluminum product. And from the street, you know, up at the second floor, you really can't tell the difference. And we've installed that at some of our other projects, that we can get really large windows with those, bigger than like a vinyl product. But that's really the two main reasons that I think vinyl and these composite products are popular now.
Is a fiberglass frame?
Yeah, it's like a fiber, yeah, I mean, the product is a Spella Impervia, if you want to look it up. But that's, yeah, it's like a fiberglass. I think it's technically fiberglass, but I know it's some kind of composite, yeah.
And I assume for the, I mean, you're the architect, but for very large windows, you want a frame that's very solid, and it's not going to move around, and it's not going to gap and all the rest?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, there's code standards that we have to follow in terms of how structurally sound the window has to be, because it has to meet certain wind loads. So, yeah, we would definitely pick a window that fits. You know, if it's a large window, it would still have to meet all the code requirements for the wind loads and height of the building, so.
Right, I mean, there's some products that are better than others, and they.
For sure, yeah.
But they're better, and they're more energy efficient, and they're more, have a better long-term track record as far as maintenance and all the rest.
Not challenging so much as looking for more explanation. How did you decide on the number of parking spaces, both in the building and outside? And was there an intent to allocate spaces to the future residents?
So the goal, I think, you know, typically on a project, this one, we talked to the client and said like, hey, you know, what do you, what do you want? And we know that the minimum parking requirement here is one space per unit. But I think, you know, so you're still somewhat car-dependent, I think. One space per unit is probably appropriate for like a Chicago locations, but I think once you get outside of kind of the main core, I think people still might want two cars, whether they use it all the time or not. Sometimes they're like, okay, I know I have a second spot, maybe for a guest or something. So we wanted to for sure have at least one space per unit, and then some of the larger units, you know, I think people would expect two. So we didn't have an exact number in mind, but I think initially, it was just trying to see what we can fit, and based on the number of units, kind of that's the number that we came up with.
I have a question regarding the windows. It looks from the diagrams that there might be a tint to the windows. Are they going to be clear, or?
They would be clear, yeah.
So they're not going to be reflective?
Yeah, we typically just use clear glass, yes, yeah.
And then you mentioned earlier that you were thinking of no longer pursuing a LEED certification. What's the reasoning behind that?
I think in general, LEED, especially for this size building, it's cost prohibitive in terms of, and it's not only, you know, you have to hire consultants in addition to us sometimes to actually take you through the process, through the accreditation process, and then you pay, actually LEED, you pay them a fee to do that. And on a smaller project like that, a lot of times, it's really cost prohibitive. So that's the main reason. But that's why I mentioned that we're looking into some of the, and a lot of owners do that. They'll say, okay, we don't want to certify LEED because it's just a long process, and it's not worth it, but we do want to be conscious of sustainability, so what can we do on this? That's kind of LEED, but we don't actually go to certify it. So, you know, we can mention some of these things that I mentioned here, and there's others that we haven't fully vetted yet, but that's something we typically look at, so.
Was there any consideration on the west side for trying to create, and this is probably more towards the owner, any kind of shared exit driveway, rather than just having an independent driveway? Between the this proposed building and the existing Village Center? Just to eliminate some of that extra driving pavement, as it were?
Pat, I don't know, I mean, I think we asked that question, and it sounds like maybe the neighbor doesn't want to play nice. I don't know.
It's complicated with the condo association, with all the multiple owners. And that was one of the reasons that we scared away from that. I did approach them, and with all the different owners in there, it's very complicated to get them all on the same page.
And that's a fair answer. I, it occurred to me that being a condo building. And the reason I asked is one of the purposes of the PUD processes to get that, I'm just reading here, more usable in public and private open spaces. So if you have the desire to pursue that, certainly would be encouraged. But I understand the difficulties of negotiating with however many condos there are over there. I don't remember right now.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six people's luck to get on the same page.
Could you explain a little bit more about how you approached designing this building? I know in the cover letter, it says that the, I'll quote here. "Architectural design of the building incorporates the use of traditional building elements and materials, including standard-sized brick and Indiana limestone at all four elevations with a projected cornice to provide articulation of the building masses and planes with different materials and colors to reduce overall bulk and mass." So if there's anything you want to pick up on that, like reducing the overall bulk and mass with the.
Yeah, so.
Colors, or just how you approach the design of this particular building?
So I think, I mean, like architecturally speaking, you know, in kind of traditional design, a building usually has a base, like an established base. And it's kind of, the purpose of it is one to like distinguish kind of the use a lot of times. And the other time is to reduce scale. So that's kind of the one kind of, I call it trick by architectural kind of language that we use is to reduce the scale of the building or the appearance of the height is you establish a base that's more pedestrian-friendly. So that's kind of the purpose of the limestone. And then within that, you have the variation of like, you know, the base with the band and the window. And then above that, you have kind of the main portion of the building, which is usually, you know, the tallest portion, and that's typically just kind of repeated elements. But within that, you know, you don't want to just create a solid facade. So the one thing we did is at the entry, there's actually a setback. So the vertical light kind of stone portion, that's setback a few feet. So then it doesn't, again, it doesn't give you the appearance of this one large facade. The other thing that we have is, you know, the setbacks, like you asked about for the brick around the windows. So that, again, is another kind of plane. And then you have the balconies at the ends that kind of set back into the building, even though there is a kind of a brick column, you know, there is relief in the facade where it goes back to the balcony doors. And then again, the steps, the height of the building. So like as you get to the top floor, then you, you know, there's the setback of the unit there where you have the patio on the front. So again, that kind of helps to reduce the scale. And that's just kind of just adds interest to the building, so it doesn't have, you know, a very monotone look to it.
If I look at the balconies on the side of the building, like on the west elevation, does the top balcony have a roof over it? It would be on the fourth floor?
Those, so, let me see. They would have, they wouldn't have a roof. So the front balconies would have a roof over, the top would have a roof, and then as you go down, obviously, they would be protected from the balconies.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, the top balconies.
So, yeah, the intent is that there, yes, those would also have a roof over them, because the terrace, the setback terrace on the top floor actually extends over those balconies, so there would be a roof portion of it, so those would be all covered going down.
I don't, is that in the diagram, the roof or the top terrace?
So, yeah, the floor plan, I mean, again, the floor plans are somewhat diagrammatic, but if you, if you go to 1.2. If you look at like floor plan 1.2, and you go to the fifth floor plan, you can see that that terrace overlaps the balconies below, like on a typical floor plan, so that would be basically a roof over, even the lower balcony.
But the fifth floor terrace will not have a roof over it?
Yeah, that's the terrace, yeah, yeah.
Thinking about the public, you're sorry, the private open spaces, will there be any access for the floors two through four to the upper terrace, or not?
No, there was no, that wasn't intent, no, there wouldn't be. It would be a private terrace up on the, it would basically belong to that four-bedroom unit.
The fifth floor terrace is exclusive to the top floor?
Correct, yes, yes.
Again, looking at the colors of the building, it's going to be the limestone or cast stone? It's going to be a dark brown brick?
Brown, yes, brown or gray or.
One brick, one.
And I changed, yeah.
Okay, what I'm wondering, I'm going to wonder, like, as far as the impact of the building?
Yeah.
And the size, and referencing, is any kind of, you know, classical standards with maybe pediments or anything like that? If you're open to changing those elements, or thinking about what might make the building look lighter?
Sure.
Or less prominent? It's going to be, obviously, be the biggest building in the area.
Okay, yeah, I think we'll look into that, yeah.
And then I did notice, you mentioned the pedestrians. One of the small things I noticed is that there are no awnings or overhangs, or people walking by on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Is that something that's just, is a design element you do not want to do? Or just something that's a detail that you haven't addressed yet?
No, I mean, I don't think it was planned just because of, we were thinking that because of, these are going to be private units. In essence, you know, someone would be living on the ground floor, and that the kind of public-facing would only be that kind of office space that lived, the work portion of that. So we anticipated, you know, doing some kind of green space in front of. You can see on the site plan also, there's green space in front of portions of that ground floor to, you know, provide a little bit of separation. So we didn't anticipate, like, there would be public walking up, right up to that. We do have a canopy over the main entry, though. But again, you know, we could look at it as a kind of a decorative element to the building.
Right, just the conversation between the building and the public, you know? And it's raining, and, you know, it would just be one of those things that would be traditional.
Sure, yeah.
A building to have, I'm just wondering about that.
This might be an owner question as well, but how do you envision the live-work space to work? Is this something that would be offered just to the tenants? Would it be offered to the community? And what exactly, how exactly do you envision that to be?
Well, it's kind of tied to one of the properties of the lease. So if it was, say, I think the code says the live-work space could be no more than 50%, or the work space could be no more than 50% of the total unit, and it would be divided up at some rate depending on the needs of whoever leases the property.
Are there any elements in the plan that you would consider to be like a community amenity of any type?
So I think, I mean, obviously, the front sidewalk, even though it's public, I think it's an improvement to existing, and it's kind of an extension to downtown. And, you know, the idea is that we would install benches, you know, and landscape that would be a public benefit. Obviously, I think we're planning and having a shared charging station in the back, and also that rain garden, even though it's, you know, public, I think it's, or I should say it's, you know, on a private property, I think it's still provides some kind of public benefit. So those are the things, I guess I can.
A shared EV is shared by the residents, it's not a public EV charging?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Pat, how you were thinking those, that would.
It's shared by the residents.
By the residents.
Okay. Are you familiar with the proposed stretch codes in Illinois that are being developed?
The.
For energy, the energy stretch codes?
No, sorry.
For electricity usage and all the rest. My understanding is they're being considered right now, Springfield or whatever, and they may become effective in the next year or so, possibly?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll look into that.
The windows, are those going to be, any of them operable?
Yes, yeah. They're more than likely all will be operable. I'm not sure on the ground floor how, playing into it, but yes, all the apartment units would have operable windows, yeah.
And how did you decide on the amount of window space? There's a lot of windows.
There's a lot of windows.
All the way around.
That's kind of one of Pat's initial things, that he wanted a lot of lights in the building. So, and just speaking from experience, I think just the units, when you're inside of them and you have kind of an expansive glass, they feel a lot more inviting. And there's a lot of positive kind of response from tenants that we've gotten on other jobs, where we maybe have a kind of variety of units, where you have your typical, you know, six-by-six window, like a double hung or something. But then some elements, we would do full floor-to-ceiling windows and, you know, overwhelming response is like, oh, this, I want to live here, kind of a thing. But, so I think that was just from Pat's initial kind of want, that's kind of what we did, yeah.
Because in some of those units, you'd have basically a wall of windows, or all of the units, because they're all the same. It's just that my initial impression, looking at it, is that's a lot of windows. And not a lot of wall space, and it doesn't look, certainly not classical to have that many windows. I mean, classical, traditional building does not have that much window. Also, it's going to impact your energy efficiency a lot, I'm guessing. Even if you use energy-efficient windows, it's still a huge access point.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes. But, I mean, the HVAC system is designed, you know, based on the amount of windows, yes. So I understand, yeah, I understand that there would be more energy usage in that. But I think a lot of people view just the benefit of window natural light and having the ability to open, I think that's, a lot of times, maybe outweighs, at least, you know, from a general public's opinion, like of what windows are. You know what I mean? They might not think about the energy usage, but they like that it provides other benefits, like your views and natural light, so.
Right, to your point, with the way energy codes are written, they essentially would. To your point, with the way energy codes are written, they essentially would refer no windows whatsoever, so I think, from my perspective, I'd rather see the livability of the space and the light in the air rather than cutting that off, so. Obviously, this becomes an architectural choice as well, and what, what the facade looks like, but-
Right, yeah, and obviously, the, you know, the, the energy codes have become stricter and stricter, stricter and stricter, so the, the energy codes kind of allows you to do some trade-offs, so if you want more windows, you have to, you know, compensate that by providing more insulation on the roof and in the wall, so when we go through the energy analysis, that's usually, even though you have a lot of windows, the code wouldn't just allow you to do all of that, because it understands that that's just not an energy-efficient, so then, you know, as part of the contract process, we, you know, say, okay, typically, you would need an R30 roof insulation, but because we're adding more windows, now you would need R35, or your lighting, you know, no one uses incandescent lights anymore, but in the, you know, few years back, it was like, okay, do we go LED lighting, because LED lighting was new, it was still really expensive, but that really, that trade-off was a huge amount in terms of energy usage, now LED lighting is almost the standard, so it's not as big of a, an issue, but, so, yeah, we, obviously, we, we do, the, the building has to meet the energy code, no matter what, how many windows we provide, but-
So at this point, you're looking at trade-offs to maximize the amount of window space, light versus insulation, mechanicals?
Correct, yeah.
Whatever other energy reduction factors you can find.
Yes.
What, what types of, speaking of lighting, what types of lighting are you thinking about in the parking area in the back?
Good question, I mean, it would have to be something that obviously is not disturbing the neighbors, we haven't, I, we haven't gone to that extent yet, but-
Because I am, I, I, I do want you to be conscious, and it does sound like you are, of the neighbors behind the parking.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, we don't want like a 30-foot pole light, obviously, so we'll have to be conscious on how to come, provide, obviously, the safety, but also make sure we're not, you know, being a nuisance to the neighbors.
So fixtures mount, cutoff-type fixtures mounted to the building could certainly be sufficient?
Yeah.
I appreciate all the different design elements and sort of tricks that you've employed to reduce the visual bulk of the building, but it is still, it will still be extremely prominent on that street front there, the street views really sort of drive that home. I'm wondering if my fellow commissioners have any thoughts on the five stories?
I, I don't particularly have a problem with the five stories, my view is merely that, I'm not sure that the way that this building looks visually now, and with the lack of any kind of detailing of, when, when I saw traditional products and all the rest, I expected to see something that would have a little bit more detailing as far as masonry and things like that, and something that might reflect a little bit some of the other brick buildings in Riverside, not just the ones across the street, but perhaps getting some inspiration from some of the schools, like Central or some of those buildings, where there's just a little bit more of a traditional masonry element detailing, that kind of thing, not just, like, it seems common in a lot of buildings, like, I went through La Grange today, you know, and looking at that new development at the corner of Ogden and, and La Grange there, and I then thought about this building, and I thought, well, it looks like the same kind of flat materials, you know, the same kind of like, lack of variation, so I have more of a problem, not just with, not with the height, but with the warmth of the materials, I guess, and the overall look.
Okay.
I'm struggling with the height, truthfully, I'm concerned about the shadowing on the neighborhood, on the neighboring property. I certainly, I certainly appreciate having a lovely building there compared to what is now, but, and I, and I do appreciate the attempts that have been made to minimize the fifth floor, to minimize the, the bulky look, perhaps, of a fifth floor, a five-four, five-story building, but it's still five stories. I'm, I'm trying to think about the benefit that this fifth story is providing to the community, you know, we have, it's one unit up there, as opposed to six or-
You should come over.
I've been thinking, I'm trying to come up with a solid set of words here, thinking about the purpose of the PUD ordinance and the goals, and then the building, I, you've got the bioswale in the back, so we're, we're trying to address some of the natural features, stormwater, obviously, this is in the central business district, it's already been and always has been for as long as I can remember, parking lots and buildings, so there's not a lot of green space out there, so I don't know that I expect a lot of additional green space to come out of it, and you have to create a viable building, maximize floor space and volume. The one thing, when we talk about public or private open spaces, I think access by the rest of the neighbors to some portion of the terrace would be appropriate, just if we're, if we're going to meet the goals of the ordinance, then allowing simply one unit to have that access is probably, is not a benefit, whereas giving all of the residents of the building that access would be at least closer to getting to the goals of the ordinance.
Joel?
Yes.
Because why are we, almost every unit in this building has their own private terrace, so that they have outdoor living space, so I think that's really important, as I think the natural light is really important for the windows, so I, I don't think it's possible to have public access to the rooftop, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't cause-
I'm not suggesting public access, let me, that, I would say, access for the rest of the residents would be something to seriously consider, just-
Even though each unit has their own outdoor living space?
Yes.
It's pretty big.
No, and I think it is, but I think when we're, we're talking about the PUD and looking for these trade-offs, then we have to have trade-offs, right now, what each, what each unit gets is a terrace on their floor in front of their front living room, that private open space that is mentioned isn't provided anywhere, so this would be one way to do it, I, you know, considering the site, you're not going to want, no one's going to see a little parklet in the back corner towards the north as a real benefit, it's not particularly private, how would you maintain it, how would you patrol it, how would you make it secure? So that, that's certainly something that I would be highly suggesting as part of the trade-offs of the, the unit development process. And yes, it's having the terraces and the balconies where people can have chairs or plants or what have you is a good thing.
Well, I think one way that I would ask the question is how does this building that is being proposed differ than what would, you would build if there was no PUD ordinance, except for the height of the building, which is to the benefit of the financiers, the developers, you, how does it differ? As I read the PUD ordinance, and it's the first time we've applied it, there's supposed to be some element that makes this building so much different than what would otherwise be built, that it warrants relaxation of certain zoning requirements, because there's a public benefit that's being offered, there's, it's in the public interest for this building to be built, there are certain aesthetic amenities and design elements and all the rest that offer something that would not be offered if it was just a building not taking advantage of the PUD process. So what I've heard is the EV charging stations and the bioswale, which I'm wondering if the MWRD would require something like that anyway, given the amount of storm water, and, and I'm not sure what else, so that's something-
The front yard setback also is-
The small setback of, like, around the entrance there, the, the green space that's shown with the trees?
Yeah, yeah, the pull of the, front of the building back, I'm not sure how much that does, it's ten feet, in line with the adjacent condo building.
So between the, there's an entrance, and then to the left and the right, there are trees and green space, and then there's sidewalk further off the left and the right, which presumably is, I'm not sure where the live-work space is in comparison, but you're saying that, that treeed area in the front there? What's shown to me on, I don't know what, what diagram this is.
The whole building could move forward 10 feet to the line, to the sidewalk, so we're increasing that sidewalk space and providing the grid space at the front of the building.
Right, which will be trees and bushes is the concept right now? That's what's shown, but would-
Whatever the code, you have a little rain garden in the front.
And that, that building line is the same as the adjacent building?
Yeah.
And they didn't do that?
Who didn't do that?
The adjacent building does not have any green space, and you're saying yours differ because it would have green space in front of it?
That building's pulled back too, theoretically, that building could be 10-foot forward on the-
Well, I'm saying, though, but, so your building line would be the same, but you'll have some green space in front of your building as opposed to just paved, brick area?
Yeah.
I think, given that this landscaped area really is the only sort of demonstrated community benefit with the project, when it comes time for the actual application, we'll be looking for those landscape plans to really make the most of these areas. I want to make sure that we don't forget about the other relief that's required, does everyone have any concerns about the parking aisle widths or parking space widths?
No, and I think I'll repeat the fact that I've been pushing for these dimensions for a while, so these actually fit with where I think we should be in the first place.
I agree with that, I don't have any issue with the drive aisles or the parking space widths.
I don't either.
I would concur with that, given that this is a strictly residential project, and the perimeter parking lot landscape around parcel three, the sort of offshoot that's currently zoned residential, any issues with that?
I thought that in the back there, the northern, where those parking spaces, that's a 10-foot setback there, and I thought it was five for the code.
Uh, it should be 10.
On the side, I thought the code read that the side yard backing up to residential property, you could do five, but, yeah, maybe I misinterpreted that as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what I thought as well.
I apologize if I'm incorrect, I'll double-check the code and confirm that for you.
On the southwest side of that lot, because that's B2 commercial, I thought that was zero property line there.
I will double-check, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with the southwest, to the, the buddy of the condos, that's all just parking lot anyway.
Yeah.
Another item for consideration, but this obviously requires more work, is, is there any opportunity to shift the structure to the west and cut a deal with St. Mary's for egress and figure out something else that's not pavement?
No, that's the arch diocese of Chicago, it's, it's very difficult to, there was an easement on one of these lots with the arch diocese, and that was removed.
Oh, that was removed when the arch diocese purchased the-
Yes.
Thank you, that, the, that easement is still identified in the, in the property, sorry, the-
Yeah, that no longer exists.
Thank you.
I had two final questions, looking at the very top of the building, the very bottom of the building, the very top, I know I looked at, I looked at your website-
Yeah.
And I did see that there was some plan for some project you're working on right now, to have a green roof, and it wasn't clear at all what that meant, but was there any consideration given to any kind of, other than a white surface roof, anything else on the roof that would be environmentally beneficial? And the second question is, any consideration of underground parking, which could then perhaps lower the building by one floor, or not, and provide more living space, you know, if all of it?
We did look at that, and with the footprint of the building, it's not large enough to accommodate the ramps and the amount of parking you would get down below.
Okay.
Yeah, I, to adjust the green roof, I mean, we haven't specifically talked about it on this project, but it's something we can discuss with Pat, but maybe the project you're looking at, the, the green roof was not the green roof where you can occupy it, but it was kind of that cedum green roof system, where it's, you know, kind of a shallow tray that you set up there, so it's a public benefit, and, you know, obviously, it helps to, the heat island effect and things, but that was, that was done as like a specific project requirement, but we haven't specifically discussed it here.
Okay, or perhaps any kind of like gardening opportunity for people, like vegetable gardening, which obviously wouldn't be across the entire roof, but an amenity like that, that would be seen as beneficial, that's, you know, just something, I'm just wondering if you would consider anything like that as a design boost?
All right, so any other feedback on the plans? Do you have any questions for us on the feedback that you've received?
I don't think, no, I don't think so, thank you for the feedback, and we'll holler up, and the next time we present, we'll obviously incorporate, you know, as may have the comments that you, you guys had, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item of new business is discussion regarding front yard porches and decks in the Groveland-Lincoln Kimbark area.
As I, as I mentioned earlier-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier during the update on the recent village board activity, the Board of Trustees considered the variation at 95 Groveland Avenue, which consisted of the two requests for variation, and in this case, the one request for the variation was for a, we can, we called it a deck, that was our closest defining definition, that would be added to the front of the house, there is not an existing structure historically, the house is set back about 20 feet from the street, and there is a provision, you know, regardless whether it was a deck or porch, there is a provision in the zoning ordinance that would prohibit an encroachment closer than 20 feet to the property line. Now, if you look at- Now, if you look at the attachment B in your packet, there's a list of relevant zoning ordinance sections from section 1073, section H is porches. And if you look at number, oh, that actually, I apologize, that should be a number five in that list, that continued from the section above, but number nine on that list, it says that no case may a new unenclosed porch, including eaves, be closer than 20 feet from the street lot line. So that would prohibit any kind of structure for that property. At the conclusion of the board's discussion, they asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider whether in this area of the Village of Riverside, Groveland, Lincoln, Kimbark, which was not part of the Olmsted general plan, if this perhaps is unique and therefore some sort of relief should be provided to allow porches, decks that encroach into that area in the street yard. I provided additional information back in 2017, when the Board of Trustees most recently revised the ordinance regarding this, that was an ordinance to revise and clarify how street yards are measured. It allowed unenclosed porches to encroach into the required street yard, again with that limitation of it being no closer than 20 feet, allowing encroaching front porches that are enclosed to be, currently enclosed to be unenclosed, to amend the definition of porch and to define enclosed and unenclosed porches. And included in attachment A is a map of the subject area and I appreciate Commissioner Miller pointing out prior to the meeting that the sidewalk line and the property lines on Groveland Avenue, on the front line there, kind of intersect. I mean, it's hard to tell that the property line is right on the eastern edge of the sidewalk there, so the public sidewalk is just over past those property lines, so just for clarification on that point. But that's the purpose of this, is to give you a sense of where the setbacks are in relation to the fronts of the property line. And just in a survey of information that was provided in the board packet for the 95 Groveland variation, the setbacks of other properties just on Groveland Avenue was the area that we looked at, ranged, the setbacks meaning the distance between the front of the house with the structure and the property line, ranged from 13 and a half feet to 27 feet. The average setback was just about 20 feet, nearly 21 feet. About half of the properties on Groveland Avenue have a front porch, those porches have an average depth of five feet. And again, that's a mix of multifamily and single-family properties on Groveland Avenue and then on those other two streets as well, Lincoln and Kimbark. So that's information for your consideration and again, the board request was for the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss whether some relief could be provided to allow front porches, decks, some sort of structure to encroach closer than 20 feet in this particular area of the village.
And are those existing porches legal non-conforming?
Well, we would have to look at each, we'd have to look at the WPA survey in each of those and see, you know, if we can figure out, my guess is that most of them are conforming. They mostly appear to have been built at the time the structure was built, just based on a visual assessment. But if that's the kind of information, and again, if there is a take where the Planning and Zoning Commission has a clear consensus that you'd like me to come back to you with a language to revise the ordinance, I'd be happy to do that. If there's additional information that you need to make that decision, I'd be happy to provide any additional research, go take photos, do measurements and come back to that information.
This is an interesting one and having, thank you for the backup information in the packet. The previous decision on porches and that 20-foot setback is pretty clear. And I mean, I even, in the discussion at the village board level, it was pretty clear that, you know, I'm just going to quote, "It was noted that the variability of setbacks is important to the village's landmark designation." And the ordinance preserved that. I'm hesitant to carve out portions of the village as being quote-unquote "not in the plan" because we're one village and so I don't want to create a significant distinction across the village based on Olmsted's plan. We are the Village of Riverside. The 20 feet was, while it was debated and where that number came from, it was at the time determined that it was a good number. That's a long way of saying that I'm hesitant to open this up too much. I understand the desire to give certain property owners the ability to put a front porch on the face of their building, but we come at this from a position where the previous applicant was just looking for a deck. And so they didn't even come close to meeting any of the criteria that was previously discussed or even where the village had decided they were open to, we were open to something in that front street yard. The conclusion was a porch and within certain parameters. So I'm leaning against too much change to this, but I need other people's opinions as well.
I wanted to note that Planner Siren sent me a second document, at least, I'm not sure if it's a second document, it has a different title, which is Building Footprints on Groveland and Lincoln. And it does show along Groveland, you can more definitely see the property line compared to the sidewalk. And for 95 Groveland, you can actually see that it looks like maybe there's, the property line ends maybe a foot, a foot and a half, maybe two feet before the sidewalk. But for other properties along Groveland, it's very close to the sidewalk. And then if you look, as you can see, I think on the document that's in our packet, a lot of the property lines on Lincoln and both sides of Lincoln and Kimbark, but particularly on Lincoln, you can see that there's a fair amount of room between the property line and the public sidewalk. But when I look at the diagram myself, it looks kind of like everyone's front yard is roughly the same depth, whether it's their property or not, the front yard up to the sidewalk, public sidewalk, it looks like it's roughly about 20 feet for most of the houses. And I just think that's somewhat interesting, given that the property lines actually vary a little bit compared to how close they are to the front of the houses, but somehow they were built that way. And the other thing I wanted to note is when I drove down Groveland, there's at least two additions to the front. One is a stoop just to the south of 95 Groveland, 91, that is not shown on these diagrams. And one is at 111 Groveland, there's actually a porch with a set of steps, which I'm guessing, without measuring it, I'm guessing it would mimic sort of the depth that would have been represented by what was proposed to us by the owner of 95 Groveland, given how far out the steps came out and the depth. I know he was proposing, I think that's an unenclosed porch, he was proposing more of a deck, but it would have been sort of the same effect. And when I looked at that, given all the other properties around it, I was not in any way offended by how far that came out towards the sidewalk, it didn't seem to me to be oppressive. Now, maybe it was a more modest porch than what was being proposed to us for 95 Groveland, but I just did not, I don't particularly have an objection to allowing some further encroachment. And as far as this piece, this area and perhaps along Burlington or Quincy, I think we have to recognize that these properties are of different size and mass than a lot of the other properties that are in the R1A or R1AA. And I think from what I read of the consideration by the board five years ago regarding unenclosed porches, they said, "Let's look and see how 20 feet goes and then based on our experiences, we can revisit this issue." And so to me, I think it could be an appropriate time to sort of consider whether we should give a little bit more leeway to some properties that are smaller in square footage and already located closer to the sidewalk, so they have a very small street yard, which, you know, would not allow them to do anything under our existing ordinance, given that you can't encroach more than 20 feet into the street yard.
I too drove up and down these streets this afternoon and as well as yesterday and I would be curious as to how many existing homes are currently in violation of the current restrictions. Because it does seem like there are a lot of porches and stoops that would have been consistent with what the homeowner at 95 Groveland was requesting. I don't, not that that makes it right, but I think it would fit in with the overall look of that area of Riverside. I don't like to separate Riverside, I don't like to carve out certain sections and say, you know, "You get to do this, you get to do that," I think that there is a danger of a slippery slope. I do however think that some consideration should be made to certain lots that have unique characteristics. In this case, you've got a whole group of them with unique characteristics and that is a very small front yard.
Then to what you're saying, could we have a select, can you go out, and this is work for staff, and survey, say, I don't know how you randomize, but randomized blocks on Quincy and Burlington and pick Groveland and then flip a coin to which side of Lincoln you want to look at and assess those distances from the property line to the face of the building. I, or, and this may be, I would start here, look at some of the research that was done for that 2017 discussion, because I think there was a lot that was out there, there was extensive discussion, it got pretty heated, shall we say? And I know also that at one point, and I can't tell you when, and I'm looking at turning Mars, there was a proposal for a porch of some sort, I think it was on Burlington. I know that it was Randall Architects who proposed it. And find those minutes and see if there's anything insightful that we could take from that.
My recollection of that was, that was one of the triggers of our discussion, I don't think that was a 20-foot issue.
I don't remember what the exact issue is and that's why I'm saying...
Enclosed and, I think there was a picture of, there was one where there was a picture of an old porch.
Oh, I haven't vaguely...
Don't know if it was that one.
Okay, that might be.
And that's why I'm saying, the 2017 porch discussion was just prior to my attendance here, whereas the...
Well, it went on for many months.
...proposals was something that I am familiar with.
Yep.
Or had commentary on at the time.
I would also add, and I hate to give you more work for the staff, but if we can look into whether or not any sort of carving out of any code provisions for certain areas of Riverside would affect our landmark status.
Of course.
I know that that was an overwhelming concern, it still is.
Of course. And any text amendments that would result from this would be reviewed by the Preservation Commission prior to going to Board of Trustees for a vote.
So what do you mean by that?
Well, I believe, I'm not an expert in landmark status, but I believe that there are certain overall, an overall look and overall of the community on the whole.
Right.
And if a certain square footage of the community looks a certain way, I'm wondering if that could knock us out of our landmark status. Is that, you tell me if that's wrong.
That's a decent way to describe it, but I think it goes back to where I think we both are at, which is, one, carving out a specific area of the village as being not in the Olmsted plan. Obviously, the Olmsted plan is one of the key features of gaining landmark status. And then that whole slippery slope of creating a us and them based on R3 versus R1, I really don't want to go down that road.
I have to say, I don't see it at all as an us and them or anything else, I see it as being sensitive to the different size of lots that different people own. And if you have a larger lot, you're basically allowed to do more with it. So if you have a small lot, like I forget the man's name who just recently bought into Riverside, I'm somewhat sensitive to a desire to maximize the use of your property and to create a home that you like. But the part of, the point of the zoning is that you don't want it to negatively impact your near neighbors. And so I think perhaps one element that could be looked at as we think about this is percentages, is let's say if someone's proposing adding a structure to the front of porch or whatever we'd call it to the front of their house, how far variance, how large of a percentage variance would that be from the front line of adjacent buildings? So if he's proposing five feet and to the right of him, although it might be 10 feet once he puts the steps on, if that's 25% more than the front yard to his left or to his right, is that a good amount? Is that too much? Is that too little? Are we going to give more variation? And I just want to make a comment too about what I said about the porch at 111 and the stoop, it's very possible that both of those are totally allowed under the ordinance. It could be that that 111 porch, and I walked by that house while they were reconstructing it, it could be that it was a reconstruction of something that was there and the stoop could have been totally allowed under the ordinance, just that it's not reflected in the diagram. So it could be useful to have perhaps someone surveying this diagram and sort of making a note where there's actually an additional stoop or porch that isn't reflected on the diagram, so, just so we know that.
I also want to clarify my position. I don't, while I don't want to carve out sections of Riverside, I want to acknowledge that there are certain areas of Riverside that could benefit from consideration based on the size of their lot and the position of their home in relation to the lot line.
If I can jump in for a second, I think it's sort of similar to the way I've been thinking about this, is that I also very much do not like the idea of having regulations for areas based on whether they're in the plan or out the plan, I think that's needlessly divisive. That said, I would be open to looking at how our regulations for front porches practically work within our denser zoning districts, being R2, R3 and R4, since they are physically different, you know, by, intentionally with the zoning. So I would be open to looking at that for front porches, however, I would not want to see decks in front yards anywhere within Riverside, I don't think that's really consistent with any place in town that I can think of.
Yeah. Can we clarify the difference between deck and porch, unenclosed, an unenclosed deck versus, or an unroofed deck versus an unroofed porch? Just if we could have that discussion, because I think when Mr. Cirillo was here, I think in my mind, the difference between what he was proposing and a porch was very slim. You know, it seemed like you could call it a deck, you could call it a porch. I guess in my mind, a porch is a little bit lower to the ground than a deck and I guess that just depends on the elevation of your house and what the elevation of your house happens to be. And then if the architecture would benefit from having a roof over it versus not, you know, that seems to separate it from deck versus porch.
Right, so the porch is the definition called for a roof, right?
Yeah, I think that's not even in question, a porch has a roof. It's an open, it's open, it has a roof, it's raised, a deck does not have a roof. We can debate some of the other elements of it, but I think that's kind of the key marker, porch has a roof and probably columns, but again, I don't know that I want to get that into that level of detail. I'm not, I want to be very careful about looking at percentages or... I'm not, I want to be very careful about looking at percentages or, I don't know how else to describe it. The previous discussion on porches came to, I think, what was a pretty good conclusion in terms of we are setting a preferred distance off the front property line. That was the 20 feet. It allowed for porches beyond that distance. I'm somewhat sensitive and also somewhat insensitive to the idea of unique lots. I think that we see a lot of variation proposals that say, my lot is unique, my, my lot is not typical. And a glance merely at the area between Kimbark and Woodside shows you that almost every single lot is different. So I, people have used that my lot is unique justification very easily. And it might be a supporting justification, but it certainly isn't a primary justification. Smaller lots come with their own considerations. I, yeah, I, some leeway is allowed. I don't think we want to go too far down the too much leeway. And that's why I'm kind of sitting fairly comfortably with the ordinance that we've already got in front of us.
Would there be a support for the idea of allowing regardless of, if you have, for example, Mr. Cirillo's house, which was effectively at 20 feet from the street, stating that you are allowed to have a, and this is debatable, whether it could be a deck or a porch or whatever you're allowed, you are allowed to have a front deck or porch up to five feet. And if you just so happen to have, let's say, Mr. Cirillo's house was set back 23 feet from the street, that, you know, five feet deck can encroach two more feet, so it'd be 18 feet from the street. And, you know, again, it could be a deck or porch uncovered or covered. I think, you know, I'm no expert in architecture, if Mr. Cirillo thought that that would be aesthetically, you know, displeasing to have a roof over that structure. But to allow that five feet, because five feet seems like the amount that most folks need to put a chair out there to be able to maneuver around and have that encroachment. So to say regardless of the placement of your home on the lot, you can have five feet. And if it encroaches five feet, it encroaches five feet. If it encroaches two feet, it encroaches two feet.
I think that's probably as far as I'm willing to go. I've thought about that. The one thing that we mentioned was that average or existing distance of the other homes on the street to the property line, and I, I'm not sure how to write this or make it read properly. That's why we have counsel, as well as staff, is allow that five-foot maximum porch without going further towards the lot lines than anyone else existing on the, on the street.
I would hesitate.
Does that make sense?
I would hesitate to tie anything to any existing homes because something could be torn down and rebuilt and I think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tie any measurement to any other existing home on a block. Because we don't, because we don't know if those homes will always be on that block.
From a practical perspective, there are, we have plats of survey for many homes. There are many homes that we do not have a current plat of survey. And we would need to rely on the WPA survey, which may or may not be accurate. And I believe, looking through the notes from the discussion from 2017, in some cases, it was off by a bit. So I would be hesitant to tie an entire house based on whether we, or not we have accurate information about the position of all the homes on the street.
I'm saying for anything that's currently, when you come in front of planning and zoning to make this proposal, you've looked up and down the block and you've found that minimum distance, and that's what you're gauging off of.
Would that still apply if the house you were comparing to had gotten a variation?
That's a good question. That's where I, I'm, I'm, what I'm honestly most concerned about is this creeping forward.
Right.
And that's what I want to avoid at almost all costs.
Building on Planner Simon's comments or suggestion, another way maybe to think about this is, Commissioner Miller brought up stoops, or, I'm sorry, yes, stoops.
Yeah.
And those are, those are not encroaching, right? Those are allowed to encroach. And my recollection of this individual is he said his porch design would not extend past that encroaching stoop. So to the extent that someone is creating a stoop and proposing something that's not going to extend past that stoop, so the stoop's not being attached to the new.
I think that's not, I think he was proposing to have steps in front of the porch.
Oh, was he really?
And I, I tried to argue that he could redesign it. I don't know if he picked up on what I was saying.
I got the impression the stairs would be here and the porch.
Over to the side, so they wouldn't be coming for that. But he didn't want to do that, or else he didn't understand what I was suggesting.
I misunderstood what he was asking then. Is that your recollection too?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you clarify my point?
He's gonna, he would, he was proposing a porch, and then in front of the porch.
That's correct.
There would be steps.
A set of steps going down towards the.
Because I thought he had said a couple times that the porch won't extend past the stoop.
What he was saying, what he was referring to is the stoop and stairs. It really was more of a set of stairs that were on his property before and they were destroyed.
Right now.
Those, the ones that were removed.
Yeah.
They extended five feet in front of his house. So his argument was effectively, there was an existing encroachment of five feet, but it was limited to the stairs that led up to the house.
And this is where I'm theoretically concerned about the creepingness of it, because if I can draw this picture in the air, we have the face of the house, we have an existing set of stairs that were demolished. They went out, say, five feet. Now, we are building this deck in front that goes out to that limit of stairs. And now we've got the set of stairs that are coming out even further. And that is, that is obviously creeping towards that front lot line.
I, look at the 111 Groveland property.
Yeah.
And I did look at, and I was, again, I thought, well, that looks fine, because maybe it's the nature of those properties. Maybe it's the nature of the public sidewalk. I don't know. But it just did not offend me that it felt like it was encroaching on my space as someone walking down the sidewalk. One other element I wanted to mention, if we're going to continue considering this, is the building footprint, impervious surface footprint for lots. I mean, would it be reasonable to put in a requirement that you can't, by doing this, exceed your required impervious surface requirement? And I don't believe Mr. Cirillo would have, whatever 60%.
No, he wouldn't have.
So, yes, so if you had a property which already was maxing out, you can't also put a porch on the front to make it even more impervious surface. That would be my.
I think that would be to consider.
Yeah, that's.
By, yeah, that's already covered, I think.
Staff would not sign off on that.
Okay.
And this gets to, pardon my point, and this actually is an easier example, is we, we probably have a number of properties in the village that already are at their maximum impervious. And so by whatever their lot size is, they've got the maximum hard surface they can. And people may want to increase that. This is where, nope, you're at your max. That's what you bought into. And this idea that we want to creep bigger doesn't really work. So thank you for bringing that up.
I would like, I, I do recognize that this area of Riverside is different. And I do want to encourage people to improve their property. And at the same time though, I think that there's a reason for the variance process. And I don't want to necessarily give carte blanche to an entire area of Riverside. So I do think if we are going to consider this, and in our wording, you know, we not only have to be very specific with the size and the height and your restrictive use, I, I thought of also limiting it to just the single-family homes in that area. You know, certainly we don't want porches or decks on any of the multifamily homes or the apartment buildings. I am concerned about, and this is part of, I went through the variance qualifications or the criteria. And I noted that we had a hard time for the petitioner from last month, 95 Groveland, we had a hard time noting hardship. You know, perhaps we can say that this area or certain areas with these certain characteristics in Riverside, they don't have to prove hardship, but they have to prove everything else. Is that, what does everyone think of that?
Well, hardship or substantial difficulty are part of.
Either one.
State, state required standards for getting a variation, so I, I don't think.
Oh, so we can't, okay.
Wave that altogether for certain properties.
I'm just spitballing here, trying to be creative. Yeah.
It's an interesting idea. Again, how does it work legally is a tough one.
Right, I mean, you're kind of doing that by granting a text amendment, right? So if, if you're cool with all these blocks having closer setbacks in other blocks, then rather than make them go through the variation process and wave hardship, you would just change the code.
True, but then we wouldn't be considering the impact on the neighbors or the sunlight or any of these other criteria in the variance.
Creeping issue. Yeah, I.
If you're concerned about impacts, you could conceivably make encroaching porches a special use.
Which then brings them up here, and we can have this discussion that you're looking for.
That's interesting.
One thing to say, I'm going to just, this is more philosophizing as I'm apt to do, but just because someone comes up to us with a variance does not automatically mean that we need to change codes. It's a variance. We have a process to allow for these things. It puts the owner or the proposer on a slightly different track in terms of having to go through the time and effort. But merely asking someone to go through a variance or a special use process is not, I don't see it as a huge detriment, and it's part of how we protect things like the neighbors or the landmark status. So we've, it's been mentioned a few times, but just because we get a request for a variance or even multiple requests for variances, I don't think automatically supports the idea that something needs to be changed.
Maybe we can expand our definition of hardship in certain areas.
Well, or special use would work too.
Oh, special use.
That's, but.
Yeah, I, we'd have to look further at that special use idea, but I, for instance, you know, we think of special uses as, you know, things in the different types of commercial activities or whatever. But there's also special uses for, you know, drive-throughs and for outdoor patios and things like that. So to me, that's not, this isn't that much different if we could configure it that way.
It's not, and to your point, every church and school in the village is located in our, in our district, and they're all there by special use. So we have processes available to us, and perhaps they could be better refined to get to this goal of allowing a five-foot front porch.
I think the special use idea is promising. It seems slightly unusual, but I guess it could work.
It's interesting, but I'd agree it's worth looking into.
Yeah. And I agree with Commissioner Marhol. I have no issue with if being faced with variation requests. That's just what it's for. That's what the ordinance is for, because we have how many hundreds of lots. And if we have five variation requests on the same issue, it's not particularly unreasonable, I think, or unexpected. I did, I don't know if this is a good time, but since we're mentioning the special, the variation standards, there was one thing that came up when we were considering the standards last month, and it often comes up. And I wanted to ask for some attorney advice on this, because I said something last month about it. But one of the standards of the variation is that, is in D, that the conditions upon which the petition is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. And since then, I looked at the code, there's no definition of zoning classification. What I said a month ago was I thought zoning classification meant like R3, R4, not just is it residential or business? And so I wanted to know if that's appropriate, that we should be looking at it. So it's not all the houses in Riverside that could potentially have a porch that don't have one now. It's only the ones in the R4 district.
Right. I don't know if I've ever drilled down on that, but my, my assumption, I have operated on the same premise as you, that it's the same zoning district. So, you know, R1A versus whatever, because I think those are, the standards can be so different from district to district when you have big lots versus small lots, that those are the comparables.
Right. Okay. Because I think the reason I was bringing it up last time was because of that second floor. And I think Commissioner Politeer said, well, there are a lot of houses that have that kind of front facade with the little peaked roof over the front. And I said, well, I'm not sure how many of those are in this district though.
Right.
Compared to all throughout Riverside, because I agree, it's a common older design. So anyway, thank you for that clarification.
If porches are considered a special use, and if we went that route, you know, I could bring back some proposal to, for consideration to a future meeting. I just had a quick question. So one of the, for the standards for a special use, the second is proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is to be located. So in terms of a legal standard.
Right.
For that, would we need to then make a text amendment to say for either specific zoning districts or all zoning districts, that porches that extend past the 20-feet regulation, or the 20-feet prohibition or limitation would need to meet these specific standards? And then the person applying for the special use would have to show that they don't, that they do meet those standards? For example, that the stairs couldn't extend off the front to further encroach it towards the street. They would need to be encroached towards the side. It would need to be covered or uncovered.
So read the full standard D again.
Sure. The second standard is the proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is to be located.
And so you're saying if it's encroaching.
That would not meet the applicable regulation.
Right.
For that district, so.
Right. So that might be a hangup. We, but, you know, potentially we could work around it.
Okay.
With language, but yeah, so the special use, you know, it bears some looking into.
Oh, sure.
As an approach, but obviously there's some kinks to work out.
And kind of to the point, and I'm not sure that there, we need to reach consensus tonight or that there is a consensus. But if we have, you know, Commissioner Marhol expressed a desire to not have stairs encroached that come off of a porch or deck encroach any further to the street. I don't know if that's a consensus among the commission. And then the other thought is, would the structure need to be a porch or could it be a deck? I think the main difference being roofed versus not roofed. If there's some consensus among the board as to what those standards should be, if we could discuss that tonight, or if we want to save that for a later discussion.
I still want to stick with porch, just because that's where this kind of came out of. The example with the stairs was more of an idea of this, I'm going to give it a name now, this. this creeping-ness of things.
Okay.
I also don't want to constrain architectural creativity either. I mean, if there's a way to arrange stairs in a way that's less invasive, then I want to give the homeowner that option. I mean, they, but then that, that's why we kind of give them some parameters to work within. And then that, that's, honestly, that's most of the point of the whole zoning ordinance is here's some parameters to work in, you get creativity within this, and if you want to violate it, then you're coming to us for, coming to planning and zoning for that variation request. Did that make sense?
Perhaps one of the criteria for these types of porches could be then that it's designed in such a manner to minimize the encroachment of the porch and associated stairs, stoops, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Before we wrap up, so Commissioner Miller earlier brought up, you know, staff possibly looking at properties here, and I wanted to clarify that earlier. Were you talking about encroachments that weren't shown on the WPA maps? You talked about.
I don't know, but I've never seen a WPA map, but the, in their packet was a diagram.
Okay.
And I believe that the diagram doesn't necessarily reflect, yes, that, that.
Okay.
Doesn't necessarily reflect all of the structures on the front of some of those houses, like 111. It doesn't show, it looks like it just shows a building facade and no smaller porch coming off.
Right.
Or steps, and 95 has a little stoop, like just a one-step stoop, I think, which probably wouldn't be reflected, but if just if we were going to look at how these buildings look, it's like it looks very consistent, and I'm just saying it not necessarily is. And I'm not saying that that porch, it might have been a reconstruction of an existing porch. I'm not saying it was not legal or anything like that, it might.
Well, it might be worthwhile just to bring back the WPA map for this area. And what the WPA map shows is just kind of a sketched line of the front of the house, but there are little bump outs where there was a protrusion. I don't know if they necessarily showed stoops, but, but porches, I think, were shown to some degree.
They showed the foundation.
Or variations from the front, they're not just drawing a line.
Sure, I think for the most part, it's a straight line for most, and it's to the foundation. So if you had a porch that wasn't part of the foundation of the house, that would not be included in the WPA.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, that, that makes sense, and I recall that now that you said that, so.
There was a lot of debate about that, and that's, I almost, to Commissioner Miller's point, this idea of, or, sorry, an idea of surveying some selected blocks to see where those blocks fit against the current ordinance could be helpful.
Would you do me the favor of summarizing your marching orders for me going forward? Just a punch list of things that I will bring back to you, so that I'm very clear about what you would like to see.
Are emails acceptable?
Emails are 100% acceptable.
Should they be run through chairwoman?
Yeah, I think that would be good, just if you could collect any.
Yes, so email me your thoughts, and I will compile them.
Thank you.
And do it individually, don't do it as a group.
Right, no, and I'm also looking at Commissioner Henigan. I'm trying not to create too much work for you either, because even gathering.
This isn't overly burdensome, I can, I can do this, thank you, though, I appreciate that.
So factors to consider in weighing this issue of whether to allow porches to extend further into a street yard than 20 feet, either anywhere in Riverside or on certain, along certain streets.
Precisely. Yeah, I think just in general, we need to give Ann some idea of what she should be working on. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Can you make sure everyone has my email address? Of course, thank you.
Oh, and as far as your question for me, a deck or a porch? Again, I'm not really sure what the difference is, as far as I can tell in the code, it is that roofed bit, that that's what makes it a porch. But I also agree that I think a porch necessarily is tied into the first-floor joists or whatever, it's at that elevation, it's not at a lower elevation. So I think for me, that's essential, because it makes it look like it's a part of the house, it's part of the foundation, and probably there should be some kind of foundation for the porch as opposed to unf, to make it be more substantial. I don't think we want decks, whoever said that, we don't want decks in front of houses. Whether it should have a roof, I don't know, because I think it could be an architectural decision, but I wouldn't be opposed to having, requiring a roof. But I guess I'm, it's just like with the building we were looking at. I mean, I'm more, my concern is more with the, the nature of the addition, whether it's a porch or a deck, you know, the substantialness of it, its appearance, that kind of thing, than whether it has a roof or columns. If you, depending on the type of house you have, you might do the traditional porch with white columns and all the rest, or you might do something more modern like what Mr. Cirilla was proposing. So I'm, I don't have a good opinion on the issue of a roof or not. But I think it should be a consistent elevation or height, just like the first floor of the house.
All right, well, please send me your comments, and we'll get those to Ann so she can do what she needs to do. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, the next two, old business. PZ 23-0001, site plan review for Central Hauser parking lot and site improvements. This matter will be continued to a special meeting on Monday, May 1st, 2023. There will be no consideration of this matter at the April 26, 2023 meeting. So we do not need to make any motion or do anything.
Nope, just continue it.
Continue, very good. All right, and our final item of old business, examination of impervious surface standards. Ann, favorite topic, I'm excited, we're finally going to dive in. So this was continued from March 22nd, and this is the first item in the commission's 2023 work plan. So the commission had previously discussed this, and the most recent update was March 2022. So my thought was to draft a, I provided background of what we've done previously, and then to provide a starting point for your review, a draft work plan, that's attachment A in your packet, and laid out to start with that this is not meant to be, this is just meant for food for thought, and that this work plan is meant to be updated as we go through the process. It's laid out in, to my mind, a logical, linear fashion, but I think that as research is done and questions are raised, we might kind of come in and out of each of these thoughts. Moving down to goals, the first goal is to promote sustainability by recommending amendments that encourage the use of permeable surfaces, surfaces and living infrastructure. And I wanted to, as a side note, and one of the elements that I'll revise based on your feedback, Chairperson Mateo pointed out that the commission had previously discussed incentives for improving or I guess reducing the amount of stormwater runoff or the treatment of stormwater runoff. By assumption, that would be, that would be part of the zoning ordinance amendments that we would conclude with, but I'll specify that in the plan. She'd also recommend, and I'm just, since I'm on a roll, a downspout separation was a previous topic that was specifically mentioned that I will add to the work plan. And then I, moving down to the elements of the work plan, I just want to mention that this is going to be a collaborative effort. So I'll be working on it, I'll be working with professional engineers, related agencies, other communities, industry professionals, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and anyone who has expertise or interest in the area. I'm happy to discuss any thoughts, concerns, or gather information from them. But starting with element A and then moving through is basically to define terms, compile a list of related terms that we haven't defined, and discuss those. Create a list of, moving to C, create a list of commonly-used pervious, semi-pervious, and impervious materials, so that we understand the materials that we're working with. And then moving into D, to identify and present best stormwater management practices, including using living infrastructure and other sustainable practices. In, in a sub-point in D of concern for me is special consideration should be given to the proper installation and maintenance of those. It's all well and good to say that you're putting in a pervious surface. If you don't install it properly, it's not very pervious. If you don't maintain it, it can become impervious, defeating our goals. Point E, research surrounding communities and appropriate agencies' methods of calculating impervious surfaces. So that includes the MWRD standards, other communities to explore, aside from ones that are near to us, Elmhurst and Rybrook, New York, were mentioned. Moving onto the second page, to analyze the benefits of and how to best determine the percentage of impervious coverage lots within the village. So that mentions prior research from certificates of compliance, and there was a mention of that in the memo that was previously presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just as a note, as I've been analyzing the impervious surface coverage for certificates of compliance for the past couple of months, I've just been keeping a spreadsheet, and that I have some data. I've done, some, most of these are current, some are older ones that I just happen to be looking at for building permits and added to the spreadsheet. Just of note, of the 40 properties that I looked at, seven exceeded the amount of impervious surface coverage. So just as a kind of thumbnail perspective. So in doing that research, what I'd like to do is use more current, within the past few years, surveys, just because we know that they're accurate. You know, hopefully, we can make sure that folks haven't made improvements that aren't shown, kind of map those out. Ideally, what I'd like to do is present a map and do some sampling for you, data that we have, and then sampling specific areas. And if you have a specific area that you'd like me to poll surveys for and take a look at, please let me know. You all know about, you know, the community and its flooding areas, you know, that we have, we have some that we're aware of, but we're, we want your input. Moving on to point G, and that's where we actually recommend zoning ordinance amendments that encourage the use of permeable surfaces, and that's where the incentives would come in. We would use research and findings from C4 as a guide. We would look at what other communities are doing, focus on those that have recently amended their codes. We're looking for best practices. But we want to ensure that whatever we're recommending maintains and enhances Riverside's character. And so, and, so that's both for encouraging the use of permeable surfaces and to strengthen and clarify stormwater management and retention. So I know that's an awful lot, but what I'd ask is for your initial feedback, any corrections, any additions, any deletions that you'd like from the work plan. And then moving forward, please just let me know any, any feedback that you have. I'll start with this one. I think this is excellent work plan that you've put together, very comprehensive, and it does address my two main concerns, which are how you really incentivize or count permeable surfaces, particularly combined with the fact that they are often not maintained or installed properly, and how other communities are looking at that, how they deal with that. That's, that's a key. It's fine. Agreed.
Kind of in the same vein, and I don't know if it falls under D, where we're talking about BMPs, or G, which talks about green space, but when we talk about rain gardens, is there a minimum? There kind of, there needs to be a minimum size.
Okay.
And is there a maximum size? And the maximum size more gets into the, again, something that gets tough to deal with, is front yard landscaping and grass, and we already had the debate about how long no-mow may could last, so just, is there definition to what a rain garden is? Does it have boundaries? Is there some way to, and maybe it's just, maybe it just becomes dealt with via the maintenance issue? Is, it has to function, and therefore, that greenery that acts as the rain garden is in a certain footprint? I'm throwing out some random ideas here, but the biggest is, if you're going to have a rain garden, then it has to be functional, it has a minimum size. The other things I mentioned are just maintenance and aesthetics and all those hard topics that get tougher to define. And yes, the bullet points are excellent, and the multiple topic areas.
Ann, you probably have tons of resources already, but I'm going to throw another one your way.
Yes, please.
If you're not already familiar with the Naturally Resilient Communities website, it's a collection of information on nature-based solutions to flooding issues and other climate change-related issues. And it has things like rules of thumb for rain gardens, what it means, criteria for them, and that type of thing, not for all of the different elements that we've considered, but for some of them, and it could, could point us in the right direction.
What was that called?
It's Naturally Resilient Communities.
Resilient, thank you.
Yes, I don't think that's the name of the website, but if you type in naturally resilient communities, it's the first thing that comes up.
Thank you.
I think the work plan is really very detailed and really great. One question is, under which bullet point would the incentives be?
Right, so I think those are going to be G and H.
G and H.
For the revisions of the zoning ordinance. Obviously, the research would come before, but that's where they would be implemented.
Okay. And then along that line, I looked at our building, our property maintenance provision in the municipal code, and it says that we are hereby adopting the 2006 edition of the property maintenance code. That's at least what's in the, our current code that's online. It seemed a little outdated to me, but one of the things that it mentions in there, which I think we should pick up on, and I'm not sure if it's always enforced, is that roof water and water from paved areas, either from a roof or paved areas, shall not be discharged in a manner that creates a public nuisance or that extends onto someone else's property, or that doesn't discharge directly onto adjoining properties, is what it says. So if you put your, your downspout, you know, six inches away from your neighbor, does that count? And should we look at issues of neighboring properties and elevations or sloping? Because I think what could happen is that someone builds a new house or renovates their existing house, their yard slopes down towards the neighbor, and they might just be, you know, exhausting water right near their house, but it's going to go right towards their neighbor. So that's an issue, I think. If we're going to broaden this out beyond impervious surfaces to stormwater management, that's an issue, I think, that the village should look at.
To that point, does the provision of a grading plan during the renovation approval process address that?
Address where a downspout would be moved.
The grading plan, does that, to some degree, address or force the owner to verify that they're not dumping their water into somebody else's yard?
Does it consider stormwater management?
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is yes, and that's an area, Christopher Burke is a contracted contractor working for the village on engineering review. I'd be happy to, we'll be consulting with them. I anticipate, as part of this process, we'll have, you know, special guests come and speak to you and provide their areas of expertise and answer your questions. And to Commissioner Miller's point, we just had a conversation with some homeowners about that very issue, of trying to figure out how to manage the water in that they have pond in their backyard. If they had a larger front yard, that they could have a underground storage with an overflow that would pop up in their front yard and could infiltrate. They have such a small front yard in comparison to where the property line with the village is, that there's concern about bringing that water and having it overflow, especially in the winter months, over the village property, and creating a freezing issue on sidewalks or the street. It's a real issue, and I think is definitely something that we need to discuss, and, you know, to the point where we can get, I don't want to, with any project, you don't want to expand too large so that you're not eventually coming on and finding solutions, but I think that we can self-manage as we go through this and try to focus in on the points that we want to raise. So yeah, to the point where we need to reduce the scope of work, we can do that too. So just please provide me your feedback as we go through the process. But my first thought was, is to take your comments for today, make any changes to the work plan, and start with. work plan, and start with, start with element A. I'll continue working on, as I go through with the certificates of compliance of gathering that data, so that we'll have that, do additional research, but really focus on A. So we're just going to start with definitions and research and other properties, and kind of come back with you with those findings at a future meeting.
Great.
And Commissioner Miller, the 2006 International Property Maintenance Code is used by a lot of communities, for whatever reason, still. My assumption is it probably just doesn't change that much, so there's no need to update it.
Okay, I wasn't being critical, I was just thinking that.
No, I understand.
With there's so much with climate resiliency and everything recently, that there could be some elements, maybe, that we should adopt from them.
Sure, yeah, and that's possible, those are the kind of changes you would incorporate in an update, but I'm not sure to what extent they address those.
Yeah.
I can confirm that the 2018 Property Maintenance Code is pretty much word for word.
Twenty eighteen.
In this, in this section.
Right, right. Well, that could be, yes. But I certainly agree, a lot of this is, of course, probably most people know, it's not like what you put in to begin with, it's what happens years in the future.
Yeah.
And you might put in the best thing, but it's not maintained, or if your neighbor changes their drainage, their, how their downsights go or something, and you don't have a lot of recourse, unless there's something in the code that restricts that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think one of the issues with, if you're talking about new houses or renovated houses, one of the problems is that all the dirt that they put on that, and there was recently a house built on our, our, our street, is that not only might the house be raised up, but also a lot of the dirt that goes around that new house is fairly compacted, compared to everyone else around you, and so even if they're trying to do the right thing as far as grading functionally, there might be more impervious surface than they want to acknowledge because of that.
Certainly.
Yeah, even though it looks like grass.
Well, and grass is not all that absorptive.
That's true, too, yes.
Compared to.
Yes.
Other more native.
Yeah.
Flora.
Right, okay. All right. Anything else on this item for tonight?
That's all I have.
Wonderful. All right, I mean, I have no other information to share. Anyone else? In that case, our next regular meeting will be on May 24th, but there will be a special meeting on May 1st. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Right.